February tenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting of the Paris City Council is hereby called to order at five thirty P M. For the purpose of this meeting, there is a quorum of the council present. Agenda item number two, invocation. Prior to the invocation, I would like for us to have a moment of silence in memory of Bill Strathern, a council member and a mayor pro tem who was elected back in May two thousand seven. Mister Mister Strathern passed away on February second. If we just have a moment of silence. Now Mister Gene Anderson will deliver the invocation, followed by the United States Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by council. Please rise.
May we pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all your many blessings. Father, we know they all come from you. Father, we thank you for our council members and their willingness to serve and give of their time and their skill and their knowledge to help our city be a better city. So we pray for their your guidance for them tonight. We pray for our staff that, Father, we might be zealous in all that we do, that we would accomplish much in the time and the and the opportunities that you give us. We pray for our nation, our state, our city, and we pray that your blessings would be upon it for us these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item number four, Citizens Forum. Persons desiring to address the council must limit their presentation to no more than two minutes. Unless an item is posted on the agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the council from responding to any comments other than to refer the matter to a future agenda, to an existing policy, or to a staff person with specific factual information. Claims against the city council mem- city council members or employees, as well as individual personal appeals, are not appropriate for Citizens Forum. If necessary, the city council may convene into executive session under chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code regarding any items on this agenda. The public forum is now open. If there is anyone who wishes to address the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Clifton Findley, five five four South Main Street here in Paris. Just calling, not calling, coming by real quick. I had called Becky a few weeks ago. I live in the historic district and it's become fairly routine now that the train horns start going off about three A M. I I realize that, of course, that means there's commerce and business going on. And I don't want to discourage that by any stretch of the imagination, but it is also bordering a large residential area and three A M. Train horns are problematic for sleeping children, sleeping fifty year olds, everyone involved. And so I don't know what can be done, if anything, but if there can be something done, I would greatly appreciate it. I know my my neighbors and I would. So anyway, that's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Carrie Ralston, eight fifty four South Main Street. And I will agree with Clifton. I live a little closer than he does. The horns go off and it isn't just a honk honk. Well, that's not how they go, but it's it lays on and it lays on and it goes and it stops and it goes more and they're very long, very loud, and it just seems a little over the top. So living that close, trying to sleep, it's it just seems like there could be something that we could talk to them and say, you know, maybe not so much, or maybe even put up a stopping. I don't know what those are called, but that's all I wanted to come encourage that.
Thank you.
Alvin Atwood, twenty four nineteen Bonham Street, Paris, Texas. Y'all remember back when I told you all about them train horns that was going to become a problem? I was right. I live at twenty four nineteen Bonham Street and that thing has woken me up in the middle of the night so many times. Anyway, not here for that. Look, I reflect upon last time. I'm sorry that I got a little emotional about my last meeting up here with y'all, but that's something close to my heart. I mean, I've got the weight of the world bearing down on me right now that I don't just share with everybody, but I have a whole new set of pills that I have to take daily because of what's going on in my head. So do trust when I with everything I've got going on from tax fraud, from this Bridget lady to trying to start a business and still prevail with my family with my back giving out even more. Just found a new disc that slipped, a new pain medication that I swore I'd never take. I've got stuff going, so trust me when I tell you. I'm not coming here just to argue and tell you the bad things. I'd love to tell you about the good things I've noticed, but I'm telling you, I've talked to people all the time. That water bill now is too high. Now, we've got to get that down. We cannot afford more. We just can't. I mean, you're I'm not trying to, you know, put this off on anybody, but I'm known people to leave here, call this place home all their life. They're not here no more. They've moved off. Just can't afford it, man. And is the government going to do better later on down the road? No, I hope so. Everybody's watching what they're doing. They're putting money back, but is that going to help us anytime soon? I still can't afford the food. Just consider trying to move some money to that, please. Begging you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Atwood. Anyone else? Citizens Forum is now closed. Consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the council. With such approval applicable to all items appearing on the consent agenda, a coun- a city council member may request any item to be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Before we remove anything or take anything away, I just wanted to make make council aware of something. We do need to remove item number seven. I'm needing a motion to remove item number seven from the consent agenda and to table it until the February twenty fourth meeting. We're required to hold a public hearing before we readopt any tax abatement guidelines. And so just wanted to kind of bring that to your attention. So needing a motion to remove that and table that to February twenty fourth's meeting. And then if there's anything else that we need to remove, feel free, we can add that into the motion, too.
Make the motion, remove item number seven and table it until February the twenty fourth.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion carries six zero. And I will also hear a motion to make sure that all the other agenda items are are received and approved for the consent agenda.
So moved.
So moved, okay.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion carries six zero. We will now move on to the regular agenda. Agenda item number twelve, receipt presentation of summary of findings on review of Paris TERS number one, an overview of the training to be presented to the TERS Board of Directors. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Over the previous times and last year, we, the TERS Board hired a consultant to help them figure out the way forward in terms of knowing how to run the TERS program and also the financial ins and outs and how to handle all those financial disparities that has been going on. Today, they are in, they are going to be, this is the first phase of their training and financial project presentation with the TERS Board is going to be from today, no Wednesday, but they're going to be in from today to Wednesday. And they are here to give you a small presentation of what they are proposing to do. So Fork Pine LLC is here to give you a presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. We are excited to get to have the opportunity to present just a very quick, hopefully ten, twelve minute sort of a summary of the work that we've done for the TERS. And actually, because of last month's weather, you guys are actually going to know more about what we're going to tell the TERS Board than the TERS Board does by the time that we're done today. So again, you know, we're here to talk about Paris TERS number one. This is a really good economic development tool. We're excited to see how well things have gone and, you know, some opportunities for the future. All right. Now, let's see. I'm on. Now, if I got to fight with the tech, we'll see how this works. It doesn't want to let me go. Yep, I'm on. Oh, there we are. If I go the right direction, perhaps that's the trick. Okay, so Fork Pine Consulting is myself. I'm Joseph Denny. My wife Cheryl Denny is there, also my business partner. So we're Fork Pine Consulting. We do economic development incentives consulting. We've been fortunate enough to do a number of projects in Paris. We did the a big chunk of the financing for Delco when they built their new building. We got the we got them a chunk of money for that. And we were also forcing to be able to help with the Clarksville Hospital financing. So we we love this part, this part of the world, for sure. So our the the terms of our engagement really were to perform these four functions. We're going to review the financial and compliance reporting status of the existing TERS. We developed some educational resources for the TERS Board, and we'll talk about what those are. And then we're going to be leaving behind some tools for the staff and for the board to be able to, on a go forward, have sort of clarity into what needs to happen next and and how to sort of optimally do things. Just this mostly is a reminder to myself where the various zones of the TERS are. Paris is somewhat unique with the five zone TERS that's, you know, sort of spread out across the city. So I always have to sort of remember where the various zones are. So the financial analysis summary. So keep in mind, this was not an audit. You're I'm not an auditor. I'm not an accountant. This was a business analysis. Generally, you can see I took the data provided by Lamar CAD, as well as data provided by the City of Paris staff, compared that to the projections and what was actually done. And as you can see in the financial analysis summary, everything was really tracking quite nicely until twenty twenty three, where we went from a, you know, one point seven one percent delta to thirty percent, which is somewhat problematic. And it turns out the really the the difference in the twenty twenty three number was there's a partial abatement for spiral wells, which I know you guys dealt with a couple of weeks ago. And so that that partial abatement value didn't make it into the twenty three data. So but when I rolled that in, that accounts for that big percentage delta between the two. The financial impact, as you can see to the TERS, is about thirty five hundred bucks. So it's important enough to pay attention to, but not particularly impactful this first year of the abatement. The next thing we did is we took a look at all of the various reporting and legal compliance requirements that are associated with the TERS. Again, each line item here is a specific requirement in the TERS statute that has to be completed and reported on. I'm very pleased to say that you guys are a hundred percent compliant. Everything is up and with the state and everything is in good shape on all of the compliance and annual reporting requirements. Again, this is just sort of a quick summary of what we found here. There were some communication and kind of coordination challenges just historically because of COVID and staff turnover and everything. But, you know, working with the city attorney and the E D C staff, I think we've gotten all of that data communication and coordination issues resolved, which is nice. Any questions before I go on to the sort of the second half? I want to give you guys an opportunity to ask any questions. Nope, cool. All right, my favorite question. All right. So what we're going to be doing with the board is we're going to be doing board training, really starting from ground zero. We're going to talk about the structure. We're going to talk about what the board can and can't do, the importance of their reporting and public access responsibilities. And then we'll talk about some different ways that the board can, you know, do their oversight job and measure just how well the TERS actually is performing compared to compared to projections and sort of what everyone's expectation was. We're going to talk a lot about where money comes from and how the money gets spent in the TERS. There is, I mean, this is, you know, just the 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 first introductory slide to what's about twenty five slides on the Wednesday conversation. But you can see generally, we go through the whole thing from starting the TERS to spending all the money from the TERS. Similarly, we spend a lot of time talking about how the TERS can fund things, right? How can we use potentially different kinds of leverage to get money today? You know, we talk about different ways, again, that the 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 TERS Board can partner with projects and with developers to bring more bring more businesses to Paris. And we're going to talk a lot again about how to amend the TERS. So we'll talk about amending the project plan, all the various things that can be changed in the TERS and what can't be changed, what the board's role is, what the council's role is, all of that. Again, just, you know, really kind of TERS fundamental stuff that's really critical for the board to understand so they can do their jobs appropriately. And then finally, the last thing that I mentioned, like I said, we're going to be doing providing tools and process documentation. So a couple slides ago, that the example that I showed for, you know, how to modify a TERS, this is part of that, part of the process flows that we'll be leaving with the staff and with the board, so they can understand that if they want to modify a TERS, who has to start the process and then where in each, you know, each step of the process and who has responsibility for it. So these swim lane process flow diagrams are a super great way to be sure that you you understand where you are in the process and that you hit all the steps. So we'll be providing these for one of these for each of the various things that a TERS Board can do. So again, there'll be lots of clarity from for them about how to go through a process. We also provide timelines so they so that everyone will know about how long it takes to go through one of these processes. So again, nothing, nothing terribly complicated, but just sort of some modern kind of process management tools, which we found to be very helpful. And then again, the this sort of the big deliverable for us will be this board information notebook that will contain all of these elements in it. In addition, there is also a number of spreadsheets that will allow the board and staff to understand the impact potentially of abatements on the TERS, understand, you know, project out TERS revenues. So and just a lot more robust. just a lot more robust economic and projection model than previously that the, the board had access to. The one that was created when the TERS was started six years ago, I guess now, is a little bit kind of out of date. And so we've updated that, and hopefully made it a little more user-friendly for everybody. So that is really just, again, just a quick, hopefully pretty brief on how long I went, not too bad, overview for you guys on what we're planning on doing. So that meeting is Wednesday for the TERS Board at four, if I said that right, four o'clock?
Four thirty.
Four thirty, my apologies. That's why I have a phone, because I can't remember times. But yeah, so yeah, we'll be back here at four thirty Wednesday for the big full board. And then I think we're also having a conversation with some folks tomorrow morning here at 10:00 to just talk more about this. Anybody have any questions or anything I can help with?
Counsel, anyone have any questions?
I do not.
Um, how, how is our TERS currently being funded?
Uh, well, so it is, I mean, it's, the City of Paris dedicated 50%, I'm going to use some weird terms here, dedicated 50% of the increment to the TERS fund. So what that means essentially is in 2019, they set a baseline value for all the property in the TERS, okay? And then all of the growth that happened over 29, between 2019 and, in this case, 2023, is the last set of good numbers. All of the growth in there, that's called the increment, right?
Yeah.
And so half of the, of the tax revenue, the City of Paris' tax revenue from that increment have been deposited into the TERS fund. And so that, that's the, the mechanism of funding.
And what's the life, lifetime of the TERS?
It was originally 30 years, so 2019 to 2049 is the, is the current, yeah.
And then, and then the projections that you'll show has what the growth potential will have in the workshop?
It does, yeah, 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 exactly. One of the two, one of the, the projection tools that I built will let us model what we think the property tax rates are going to be in the future. It'll let us model what we think the property value appreciation will be in the future. And it'll also let us model any new projects that come into the TERS, as well as if there's an abatement associated with those, how long the abatement lasts, and we project all that out. And I can tell you right now, the good news is, is the TERS is substantially ahead of your original projections in terms of, of money that's already there. So there's more that, you guys have more than you thought you were going to have at this point.
Okay. And just one more question. Who can use the TERS money?
Who can use it?
I mean, could, besides the city, but could a private investor?
Yeah, that's the, that'll be a, a big piece of what we talk about. But yeah, I mean, that's the, really the goal of this particular economic development tool
Uh huh.
is to find a way to make an economic development incentive package more attractive. So yeah, there is, there are ways to move money directly to projects.
Mm-hmm.
So a developer, you know, can come to the board and, and ask, you know, for, you know, to, to use the TERS money, and that's, yeah, that's a big chunk of money.
But it can, could it only be in that one zone, or could it be outside of the zone?
Oh, oh, yeah, no, right now, with the, the way the project plan currently is written, all the expenditures have to happen in Zone Two, which is the downtown
Sure.
part of the, of the TERS. So yeah, as, as it's currently contemplated right now, the revenue has to stay in that Zone Two
Okay.
of the TERS. So, which of course, the board can change if they want to, that's their, one of the joys of being on the board, you can change the rules.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
But yeah, that's it.
Anyone else? Well, Mr. and Mrs. Denny, we welcome you to our community. Thank you for coming and, and spending a
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, you, you, well, you, by the time you're done, my goodness, you, the, the amount of time you're spending here and allocating ti, dedicated time to our community is, is fantastic. So thank you for taking the time in advance. And we look to, we look forward to having a great conversation throughout the course of the week. And I know many of us have been really excited about the TERS and along with the TERS Board. We look forward to advancing that TERS and, and really using that, that money to for a great, greater thing. So thank you for your direction.
Absolutely. Well, thank you guys for the opportunity.
Yes.
No.
That was it. All right, thanks, guys.
Fantastic. Thank you, guys. Moving on to agenda, agenda item number 13, discuss an act on a resolution approving and authorizing an economic development agreement and tax abatement agreement with Invest Lamar LLC pursuant to five and five housing infill development program. Counsel, staff has learned this morning that the developer has withdrawn their application from this particular item. So we will go ahead and move on to agenda item number 14 and, and surpass this one. So agenda item number 14, discuss an act on the appointment of Paula Portugal to fill the unexpired term of Thalysia Mosley under Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, for several months, staff has been advertising for a vacant position on planning and zoning. And we have one applicant, that's Paula Portugal. We're recommend, we're recommending that you all approve appointment for her to serve on the board in a vacant position.
Is there any discussion? And if not, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
Um, I make a motion to approve Paula Portugal to planning and zoning.
Second.
We've got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number 15, receive applications for disannexation and provide direction to staff. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, I do. Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council, the agenda memo that I provided to you does give you options that relate to approving one of two resolutions. It wasn't posted that way on the agenda, so we're just going to talk about it tonight. And we'll come back with resolutions for you at the next meeting, which will probably change that calendar that's contained in this memo somewhat. But just so that we can, we have some people here that are interested in this item tonight. We have three property owners, Wally Kraft, the Cobb Testimentary Trust, and Paul and Shelley Morrison that own property on 271 South, where it's kind of still kind of sort of east-west there. They're south of the highway to the side as you're going towards Mount Pleasant, next to Mr. Kraft, Dr. Kraft's property is next to the Woodall Field. So that's where those parcels are. And you have a map of where those parcels are. Each of these property owners has given his grounds for disannexation of these properties, that they do not have city water or sewer. There are sewer, there's a sewer line, not, the question is, how hard would it be to tap into these lines, and how expensive would it be to tap into these lines? There are some lines available. It's not just a wasteland. And Dr. Kraft has a building, his clinic now actually has city water and sewer, but his property, and I'm assuming the other properties, are subject to some eminent domain proceedings by TaxDOT that are going to widen 271 South there. And they're taking enough of his property, Dr. Kraft's property, that he has to demolish his current clinic and build it further back on the property, which would require new private lines to, to tap into the existing city lines. Dr. Kraft is here, I don't know if there's anybody else here that might want to address you about this item. The petitions meet the criteria for you to consider them. Occasionally, we'll have a petition that, for example, if it is a single property that would create a keyhole in the middle of the city, I recommend that you just deny that outright. And you could do that here, but I, my recommendation, recommendation to you next meeting when we have the resolutions here, it would be to authorize the institution of disannexation proceedings, which would let us set the public hearings, it's two separate public hearings. And, and the calendar's weird, I have to figure out what the calendar is. But it does not obligate you as a council to approve the disannexation, it just lets the procedure go through so that more information can be provided, people get the opportunity to speak at the two public hearings. So that's going to be what my recommendation to you in two weeks is going to be. But you're free to approve it, or you can deny it outright to begin with, if that's what you choose to do. And so now, if you want to ask anybody to discuss this with you, certainly you're free to do that, or you can wait until the next meeting when we have the resolutions in front of us.
I know that we already have a few individuals here. If counsel's okay with it, we'd like to go ahead and have them come up and speak on, on behalf of this item.
Mayor, council members, appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. First thing I want you to know is, I by no means wanted to tear down my veterinary clinic, okay? That was completely unexpected, I can assure you. That's really the biggest thing we've got to deal with right now, is the fact that not only are they going to take it down, but they're going to take, it'll go basically through my reception room right now, which is going to require us to move back a considerable amount of space. The water that we have right now, I don't know whether you, I, I can give you a map here and show you what we deal with. The water comes from over on the loop and actually runs through
About three acres of woods.
Woods, and then through the ballpark, okay? And I mean, I have no, I have no access to that other than, at that time, Mr. Woodall had the water access there. I'm tapped into it, so is Woodall Field, I checked them. And eventually, that will have to be fixed, is all I'm going to say, okay? That water line is at least 60 years old. I have had at least three water leaks, the city, the ballpark's had at least two water leaks. And we just have to go out there and walk in the woods to find it. I mean, I'm sure when it originally was there, it was pretty easy to find, but the water line is, it's, it's just out there in the woods, and that's crazy. But I, I, if you want me to, let me pass these maps out, and you can kind of see what I'm dealing with. My tap is over there on the loop, okay? I think there's a number, everybody. My tap is over there on the loop, and my water line, the tap, it shows the tap, and then it shows where we know where there's actually a junction where both the city, both the ballpark and myself are tapped into that line. Now, that distance between the loop and between where that tap is, is where the line is running someplace through the woods and the ballpark, okay? So that's the biggest problem with the water. The sewer line is next door right now, it was put in a year ago, a year and a half ago. I have been, I, I was originally out there for about seven years prior to the time that I was annexed into the city. I built in the county originally, and then I was annexed into the city. And it, it just, it's a veterinary clinic. We do treat large animals, we have large animals out there, we have cows, and there's dogs that bark. I mean, I'm just going to tell you, you, you've been around a veterinary clinic before, and I'm sorry, but they're there, okay? So it's easier for us to be in the county, and, and that's the biggest reason we want to get de-annexed, the sewer, the water, and we don't want to be a hazard to the city, okay? I want you to know that I've been a part of this community for a long time. I served on the Board of Health for 17 or 18 years. I was happy enough to hire your new manager for the Health Department, which is a wonderful thing. Thank you, appreciate it. And I, I've taken care of the Police Department and the Sheriff's Department ever since I've been here. Anything that comes to my clinic in the evenings or that's been, they picked up, I'm happy to see it. And we see it pretty regularly. I mean, that's, that's not every night, but that's once or twice a month, I'll tell you. We charge, we don't charge the city a dime for doing that. We try to locate the owner, we do first aid, and that's pretty much where we are. Any questions from anybody?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that's here to speak on this for or against this item? I know we're not going to be able to make any decisions tonight due to the, the this verbiage, but
Well, yes, this is not an action item. You know, if, if you, you can come to consensus if you wish, without taking a formal vote on what kind of resolution you want me to bring back to you in two weeks, or if you want me to bring them both and discuss it at that time. That's up to you guys.
Let's take a consensus.
Yeah, are we, are we able to, if counsel's appetite is, is the following, are we able to just move it forward?
Well, it's kind of, it's a direction to staff. If you want to give direction to staff one way or the other, you can certainly do that. It's posted that way. I wouldn't go down the line and take a yea or nay from each person.
Right. Well, if everyone's okay with it, we could at least go ahead and start with the proceedings, so that way the, the time starts going.
I'm good with disannexation.
I'm sorry?
I'm good with disannexation.
Okay, so I will bring you back that, that resolution instituting proceedings next week. Again, that will not obligate you at the end of the process to disannex, but it, it, we can calendar those public hearings and, and go forward.
Um, I am okay with the proceedings, but I, I, I spoke to Dr. Kraft. I do have hesitations about de-annexing, as I did with the solar farms. I, I want Paris to be a pro-growth story, and I know these are special circumstances, but we have to, I mean, I know people in this council also want to make sure that we are adding properties to our borders and not subtracting. So I appreciate everything you do, but that, that's just my, where my heart is.
And that point's well taken. You know, I, I said in my memo to you that because of the state of the law of Texas right now, which I don't see changing anytime soon, it is almost impossible to annex something. So once you disannex something, the likelihood of getting it back anytime while we're all walking around is very low. So that's something to consider, but that'll be something that you consider at the end of the process.
Any more discussion?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number 16, receive an update on the fuel farm project. Discuss and provide direction to staff. Mr. Vine?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, I'm excited to be in front of you this evening to talk about a project that we've been looking at for the last two years with county, the commissioners, council members and staff, and judge have all worked together to come up with this project, wherein both organizations could save approximately $30,000 to $50,000 annually on our fuel, which ultimately, the taxpayers are the, are the winners. Again, the purpose of the project is to give us both opportunities to, to not only save money, but also give us an opportunity to make sure we have fuel when we need it during emergency situations. The status of the issue is we are ready for, our next step is an interlocal agreement. And with that, to be with you tonight to talk about what the interlocal agreement would consist of, the overall project is coming in at about $100,000. County is proposing a 50-50 split, which would put our part at $400,000. But that is something that we could negotiate or discuss. But in the, in, in, in the interlocal agreement, we would talk about the level of access, management, and maintenance of the software, any cost that would be associated, not only in the first year, but moving forward, annual and maintenance facility or maintenance agreements, and the process associated for payment for the fuel, and then also a replacement fund, and then the length of the agreement. So that's where we currently are. Any interlocal agreement we would come up with, we would obviously bring back to the council for your approval. And I think our next, our meeting, when we talk about this, will be a combined meeting with, with the commissioners as well. So it's not an action item, but if there's any direction that you would like to present, provide staff, we would definitely be happy to, to go back and work with the city attorney to create that interlocal agreement.
Counsel, any, any direction, any, any commentary on this? I have one question. This meeting that we are proposing to have as a joint meeting, will that be, that'll be a next time, right before council, correct?
Possibly. If we're able to complete the interlocal agreement and both sides are in agreement.
Fantastic. I just want to make sure, as soon as we know any, anything on that, any updates, if we can have counsel be aware, so that way we can plan accordingly to be there and have
Absolutely.
have a quorum.
Yeah, that was my question. Is this going to be a county, a county commissioner and city council meeting?
Yes, sir.
Because the last time, it really wasn't.
Correct. Yeah, this one would be.
And then also, I just want to note, this project is, is a really neat development that's come up. I know it's been two years, and it takes a little bit of time. This first time that city and county have actually worked in concert on a project together, and this is a, this is a big feat. So I really appreciate all of the county coming together, the city coming together, and staff really putting, putting forth the effort to figure out a way to save money for taxpayers regarding the, the, the fuel, the purchase of fuel, given the unforeseen circumstances that have come about for availability. But I will say, this is a fantastic project and something that really is a shining star for, for our community. So looking forward to this discussion.
I take it the direct, the direction to staff is to move towards an interlocal agreement with county?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I, one question, Rob.
Sure.
What is the overall cost to the city for this project and the county?
$800,000 just for the fuel farm is the estimated cost for this project.
Any other costs associated with that?
They're, they're also constructing a building that's not, I want to say, it's not associated with, with the fuel farm. It would be, but we are only entering, entering into an ILA with them on the fuel farm.
Okay, the, the building is the county's, right?
Correct, correct.
Thought I remembered that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Anyone else? Thank you. All right, agenda item number 17, consider and approve future events for the city council and/or city staff pursuant to resolution number 2004-081. Does anyone have anything?
I wanted to go back to, I know we postponed agenda item number 13, but looking at the infill program, which we're very proud of, we want to provide better housing. But I do want to have a discussion, if we could, maybe a council member or a group could look at aesthetically, like what some of the infill looks like, just so that the neighborhoods are consistent. I think that's our goal, to, you know, have, have things that have congruity and continuity. And if that's something that you're interested in, I was just going to see if the staff could have a direction if another town does the same thing with these infill programs or just building materials, roof lines, things like that.
Ms. Pitten, are you, would you like to have a future agenda item to discuss whether or not to do this, or would you like staff to kind of put something, some ideas together and bring it back?
How about some ideas and bring it back? Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Well, we will move on to agenda item number 18, adjournment. I will take a motion
So moved.
And a second? All right, second from Ms. Norman. We are adjourned.